Good evening everyone, welcome to ATM Group Telugu Plan Presentation. This meeting is organized by all of us. My name is Vasu Pamedey, Diamond Master Education Centre Leader. I have been promoting business for 2 years. So, Atomic India Telugu Plan Presentation. So, in our atomic business, we have highlighted no joining fees. When we start business, we do not have to pay any amount. Also, we do not have any renewal fee for any reason. We have complete opportunity here. So, this opportunity can be used for 3 years. Three generations plan is mentioned. If anyone has salary or is investing in business, this is not an opportunity. Here, we have an atomic opportunity for every week. Every Monday, time to time, payments are made from our bank. One day before, one day before, amounts are made from our bank. So, every week, if you want to earn income, this is an opportunity for everyone. Also, we personally have our ID and products related to it. PV, volume, life time is accumulated. So, this is not a flesh out. This is just for some people. After that, we have a system. This product is ordered by our ID. We have a team to run the business. General commissions, bonus, ranks, rewards are included. So, this is one and only condition. Yearly, at least one product we purchase is enough. Also, here, every person is successful. Company has designed an education system. Education centres, seminars are provided by them. So, this system is used by anyone. Depending on who, self alone is the opportunity for developing it. So, this is also an opportunity for every person. So, in this picture, we have some leaders. Some of them are like Vekadama, Uddha. They are still thinking about it. Some of them are going up. So, here, we have no pull or push. So, self alone is the opportunity for developing it. Every person is also given an opportunity for this. Atomic is sharing culture. We purchase products we want. If we use it, we see benefits. If we tell it to each other, we share it. This is an opportunity for business. In this, 5 incomes are included. Instant retail profit is included. A team is developed. General commission is included. 15 days, bonus is included. In this process, we have promotions and incentives for every rank. Also, if you are a leader, you have an opportunity. Company gives opportunities for education centres. They give opportunities for education. This is also an opportunity for success. So, in these types of commissions, retail profit is up to 25%. There is retail profit. After that, we have 4 pack production. More than 30% retail profit is included. Also, global commission is included. 44% PV is a matching income. We have a two lines plan. A two lines is a business. Matching is included. Bonus, 15 days, global PV is included. 20% PV is a mastership bonus. 7 levels are distributed. Also, each rank is a first time. Mastership promotions are included. This is one time. There is no time limit. It is possible to use it. Also, in education centre commission. Who starts the centre? The members of the centre are either from our team or from another team. They run the business. From PV, 6% PV is a centre maintenance cost. Company adds. So, this is a choice. There are 100 education centres in India. We use any centre to develop business. Retail profit is instant income. If anyone wants to earn double, I started my business yesterday. Today, I want to earn income. I use retail. This is the spot where retail profit is achieved. So, there is no limit. You can produce as much as you want. Or buy it. You can achieve target. Company does not give you any advice. So, how much you want to earn? How much you want to earn? That is the opportunity for me to use retail. For example, if I want 1000 rupees daily. Approximately 5000 rupees product. We sell retail. 1000 rupees is available. If I want daily 10000. If you sell retail, 10000 retail profit is available. So, this is depending on you. How much you want to earn? That is the opportunity for us. Here, no conditions. Also, restrictions are not there. Why we produce so much? They do not ask us anything. So, this is instant. We want to earn money. Each product is also included. We distribute price. We have MRP, maximum retail price. The margin is there. This is the retail profit. If anyone wants to start business. There are 5 categories. Sales representative, agent, special agent, dealer, exclusive distributor. Now, my ID is 10000 PV completed. As a sales representative, we are eligible for business development. Or, if you complete day one, agent is your business start. Or, 7 lakhs PV complete. Special agent is your business start. 15 lakhs PV complete. Dealer is your business start. 24 lakhs is complete. Exclusive distributor is your business start. So, approximately 3.5 lakh from 24 lakhs is available. Depending on products. We purchase products. So, what is the PV? If you are day one, 11th November 2020. Product launched before 24 lakhs personal PV complete. Business started. They have a lot of incomes. Recently, we have seen a star master. Premila Bhavani. 15 days, 16 lakhs plus income is included. They have a vision. 24 lakhs personal PV complete. Business started. So, here, restrictions are not there. So, we have the capability. What style? What is the level of work? This category is the business development. Company is given an opportunity. But, in this business, we need to earn income. Minimum 10000 PV is required. So, in general commission. 8 grades are included. So, every day is a matching income. So, except Sunday. Sunday is a matching income. And remaining, 6 days is a week. Monthly average is 26 days. Beginning, 10000 PV is completed. Sales representatives are there. Through their team development. In a small league, 3 lakhs PV is completed. That day, 1321 rupees is included. So, the income is 1 week later. Next Monday, account is created. In 6 days, if 3 lakhs PV is matched. Amount is also next Tuesday created. So, if you are an agent. If personal PV is 3 lakhs completed. In a small league, 3 lakhs PV is accumulated. That day, 3964 rupees is included. So, here, we have seen. Group is a business. But, our income is 3 times better. This is happening. Our personal PV is 10000. 3 lakhs is improved. That day, 135000 rupees was included. So, if I want 3964 lakhs day one. Agent is your business start. Also, if you are a special agent. 7 lakhs match is included. Dealer is 15 lakhs match is included. Exclusive distributor is 23786 rupees. 79287 rupees is a general commission. This is per month income. Per day income. Daily is 28000 rupees. If you are in election, general commission is given to us. Every person is given an opportunity. Because of this, we are here. Our background, our experience, our qualification. We do not have any problem. Only 18 years and above age. We develop this business. Daily is 80000 rupees. This is the opportunity for us. So, because of this, we have websites. This is used completely free. Mobile app is also used. This is a smartphone. In a smartphone, we check each app. This is a double check app. So, we install the app. We register with documents. If you refer. Through details, we use this business. We purchase products we want. We tell people what we like. This is a general commission. So, this general commission is 100000 rupees. Previously, 6 days, if matched. Amount is 100000 rupees. Now, from April 1st, 15000 plus is cut. So, TDS is cut. Here, we have an income. White money. Officially, legally, this is possible. So, if TDS is not. We file it in IT returns. This is also an opportunity. Based on your incomes and profile. So, last year, I had an income of 76000 plus. TDS is not cut. Refund is included. Income tax department. So, third income, bonus. The bonus is 7 ranks. Sales master, diamond master, Sharon Rose master, star master, royal master, crown master, imperial master. So, if you look at sales master. 10% is available. Beginning stage, when you come. When you come to mastership. One share is possible. The imperial masters are 0.3%. High level reach. Less percent is possible. But, sales master is there. Diamond master is there. If you want diamond master. 4 sales masters are required. So, Imperial masters are there. Their income is 0.3%. That is possible. So, if you want to mastership. Minimum qualification is required. Personal PV is 7 lakhs completed. Left side group is 25 lakhs PV. Right side group is 25 lakhs PV. So, if we develop 15 days. We have an opportunity for sales master. If one side is strong. That side is minimum 3 lakhs PV. Remaining 22 lakhs personal PV. 15 days, we use it. We have an opportunity for sales master. If sales master is there. Through company, global turnover. 10% share is possible. Approximately, sales masters are there. 29000, 30000 is required. Also, if you want diamond master. Personally, 15 lakhs PV complete. If you are a sales master. Left side group is 2 members. Right side group is 2 members. 15 days, we develop. 5% global PV is shared. Approximately 50000 rupees is required. 15 days, diamond masters are included. Also, if you want Sharon Rose master. 24 lakhs personal PV is completed. Left side group is 2 members. Diamond masters are required. Right side group is 2 members. Diamond masters are required. That is 15 days. If we develop business. 2% global PV is shared. So, here, we have seen. Next level, we need to help. Our team helps 4. 4 are needed. Next level, we have an opportunity. There is a helping plan. So, we have 7 ranks. Why 7 ranks? Because of the limit. Each person is given an opportunity. So, if Imperial masters are. 0.3%. Approximately, 15 days, 50 lakhs, 70 lakhs is included. If you are in Imperial master. 10000 rupees is included. So, this is an opportunity. We do not have qualification. We are here. Our background, our experience. We do not have any problem. Every person is given an opportunity for Imperial master. Plan is designed. So, in mastership promotions. Conditions are there. Sales master, diamond master, Sharon Rose master. Restrictions are not allowed. But, if you want star master. Sharon Rose master is 3 times required. So, if you want 3 times. In these days, it is not possible. If you are here 3 times. Next time, you will have an opportunity for star master. Royal master, crown master, imperial master. Each rank is 3 times required. That is necessary. So, this mastership bonus is also given to us. 2 years, bank is created. Now, in first cycle. Every month, 15th, we target. Mastership complete. That is related. 1 week later, 22nd account is created. Also, second cycle, 16th, month end. We target. Mastership complete. That is related. Next month, 7th, 1 week later, account is created. So, also, for fourth income. Incentives are mentioned. Or, rewards are mentioned. Sales master is there. Every rank is a first time. If you are a first time sales master. 10000 rupees is included. The famous skincare set. Evening care set. The cost is 27400 rupees. This product is free. Also, if you want diamond master. 40000 rupees cash is available. With this, same, famous set, evening case. 27400 rupees product is free. Also, if you want Sharon Rose master. 120000 rupees cash is reward. Wife and husband, 3 nights and 4 days. Free foreign trip is possible. The trip is more than 1 lakh. 1 lakh rupees worth of foreign trip is free. Also, if you want star master. 6 lakhs rupees cash is included. Family of 4 members, 3 nights and 4 days. 2 lakhs worth of trip is possible. Also, if you want royal master. 30 lakhs cash is included. So, if you want this big amount. If you have a job. More than 30 years. Worked after retirement. This amount is possible. So, in atomic, 100000 rupees. Just a matter of 3 to 5 years. Here, we have an opportunity. Also, sponsorship money. To develop business. 1 lakh 20000 rupees. Here, we provide. Car rental is 60000 rupees. Here, 4 members, 10 nights and 11 days. Approximately 10 lakhs worth of trip. Family is enjoying 10 days. Also, if you want crown master. 100000 rupees cash is available. If you want 100000 rupees. This is an opportunity. So, if you want 100000 rupees cash. This is possible. Also, sponsorship money. Business expansion is 3 lakhs. Here, we provide. 40000 rupees is paid. A luxury car is also available. 4 members, 10 nights and 11 days. 10 lakhs worth of trip. Family is enjoying 10 days. Last one, imperial master. Atomic is a member. So, the target is imperial master. So, if you want imperial master. 60000 rupees cash is available. So, that money is available. A lot of people. 100000 rupees is here. 60000 rupees is available. Also, sponsorship money. 60000 rupees. Business expansion is 60000 rupees. Company provides. A office space with assistant. 50000 rupees office maintenance. 50000 rupees PA salary is available. So, if you want a luxury life. Also, 2 car, luxury car. So, 2 cars are not driven. Driver salary is provided. 50000 rupees. So, this is a lifestyle. Also, family of 4 members, 10 nights and 11 days. 10 lakhs worth of trip is available. Here is also free. So, this is one time reward. This time, you are not limited. You target. We are here. So, just 4 months ago. Just 4 months ago, China launched. Here, 1 crown master is there. Maybe, Imperial master is also coming. So, first, this business started. Now, 13th person in Imperial masters. 13 people. Before he, 15th Imperial master is there. If anyone is there, he started business. Here, if you apply. If you are there. If you are there. Apply before you apply. Apply is possible. So, this is an example. I understand. My plans are. More than 10 times, income is better. So, if you are not active. I am active. Business is done. So, this is for you. Next future, you will apply. So, depending on you. If you are there. You are there. Like China. Just 3-4 years, imperial master is there. Or, first imperial master. Park Young so Madangaru. 8 years, imperial master. 2017. Now, there are no products. No opportunity. If you are there. Now, he is developing business. These rewards are included. A small restaurant owner. He is able to do. Here, it is also an opportunity for every person. As a lady, she is able to achieve. So, now, we are here. This range of products. We are here. This social media communication. This is also used. Internet is also used. It is also possible for success. So, friends, every person is an imperial master. It is always targeted. So, based on this. We plan. So, 5th income, Education Centre Commission. So, if you are a leader. This business is just developed. 100000 rupees is given to us. This is the extra income. So, this is the advantage. Our team is important. Other teams have our service. Also, we have knowledge. Some people share it. This is the income. If they do, business is done. If they do, PV is there. This PV is 6% PV. A centre maintenance is possible. So, centre maintenance is required. So, now, our centre is Hyderabad Medicine Medicine Centre. This is started. But, if you look at this income. 80000 rupees is required. 3 times better income is required. Just beginning. Supplements are done. So, in beginning stage. This stage is over. Decision is taken. If you are here. Your area is started. 3 times, sales master is there. Also, a team is there. Communication, product knowledge. So, this is also for you. We have an opportunity. So, this is also dependent. So, if you want 4 incomes. Now, if you look at India. Nearly 100 centres are there. We also use it personally. Our business is developed. Which centre is it? Business is related. Information is required. This is the business. We also use our office. So, because of this. We have to change. Any company has a new system. Here, we have it. This is the way we are developing. So, this is the company official plan presentation. So, this is related. Full details are required. If you invite me. Through them, we plan. So, it is clear. So, here, it is time. Also, online, we have understood. So, everyone understands. So, nearest Education Centre visit. Here, we have seen. Education Centre leader. You have information about business. Here, you will know. Thank you all the leaders. All the best everyone. So, this meeting has guests. Diamond. Diamond Master Srinivas. This special guest is invited. So, we have learned a lot. About Srinivas. So, network marketing industry has a lot of experience. Also, by professional doctor. Many courses are taught. This experience is used. Now, in this business, a lot of incomes is taken. Recently, we have been together. South Korea is also coming. A lot of experience. So, we enjoyed it. Thank you, Srinivas. Thanks for joining. Welcome sir.
Well done Vasu Pamedey. It was awesome business presentation. So, generally, we. Like brain is there. Medical science is easy to understand. What are you? Corona is coming. Medical science is very good. What virus is happening? What bacteria is happening? Kidney is not working. Diabetes is happening. Hospital is changing. Medical science is very good. People have a fever. Corona is only there. But, in this time of coronavirus. Economics are missing. Economic science is very good. Medical science is very good. Income is not enough. It is not enough. It is not enough. It is not understood. Prices are only increasing. No profit. Economic science is only good. It is easier. The government is talking. Government is talking. gurich mahtraadunau, sampaadam gurich mahtraadunau, naagavati general ke, edda yakkatala. Eda coati eighty lakshman naroh, aru kotla naroh, adi manakuchana, adi manam manikostama, daanee, manam manikostama, adi manakupanyaasada, manakostama, daanee, daanee kostama, manam panjayaala, manakostama, adi panjayaala, yen yala ardan gaaka, panjaya kunda, puchundan chala mandi. Hello. Aru single time cash iste, yen yali, tax getal, hello?
Ha ha.
Aru kotla single time company iste, in under thirty percent tax getal, a e tax gattu vedigal, a sampaadam vodu manke. Unarre, eka, e category mansal guda untar.
Yes, yes sir.
Enough success. Mansal ki success ite, daanee valo che benefit these code guda bayme.
Yes.
Chala bayin, tax getal kada, tax gattu vedigal, sampaichu vedigal, tax gattu vedigal, sampaichu kundu gochundu. Sampaichu kuchundu pohondu, sampaichu puthi eh ilavadevillu kada, ammo, prathinela filing yali, elavadeh annual goosari, IT returns file yali, income was that tax le gattali, yen enduku, yaganecha padakal these code kuchundu serpay. So poverty belongs to those people who dare to succeed. Success kpaedha problem led, success mullechu transaction ko jana general ke bayum. Aru kotla jeepo, tax jeeple deganu, Vasu?
Ha ha, jeeple sir.
Ah, tax gattal jostha bayun, sampaichu me.
Yeah, yeah, gotine tax, unaga retrochre tax jeepunna.
Ah, so aru kotla me thirty percent and in the, one crore eighty lakhs rupees me tax le gattali, aru kotla ustana, naal kotla yavvail rupee, naal, naal kotla eighty lakshman mahtram gada uche di, ineet aru kotla jeeppe du. Nakar kotla iste, innalavadi meeta gudu me re these code. Nen imperial master onu, eon, nakasun led. So poverty akadu led, the way you think inside your brain, the way you accept these situations and opportunity, the way you reject the opportunity that makes you succeed are to stay back. Fail out and gadi lu, they stay back from the success. Success wife, arge itam guda custom. So aru kotla sampaicharant, ipparila unte, sampaichu lenkada, maray yali, matladon edge kvali. Adi custom eh, manu buthra ite bhaag vashtega, padega mahtladonadu, that is one of the problem. Indla tagadu bete guda vashtega, padega mahtladu, orpey arkan plan presentation yappadum, products green chappadum, health green chappadum, oh products amadum, F V rupee, products amte, rozu parival rupee sampaichu unaru, business, dallas meeku, andu mana group lonne unar. Sri prayam adam, every day minimum income five to ten thousand, eh retailing profit. Monthly approximately one and a half lakh to two lakh, retailing profit, minimum. Sales master me, the semi sales master me, uche di compulsory, the day she was joined the next month onwards, she was making around minimum, minimum every closing semi sales master. Once a sales master and every closing semi sales master, making good amount of money. Recently she bought a new car. I think car procedure low vision yappuna, car vanalanty bayum. Car vanalanty showroom kellaali, car quotation these kvali, down payment untundi, a IT adutadu, adibali bank kellaali, veni bah, car le avutam, bandi comfort ga. My inti car ekad sir, vanda car mallipar, car vanamantana, nen jeepte. My inti mundu parking le sir, bandi ekich tum custom sir, nak driving raas sir, iti chala custom ayipan sir, car le avupana parle. People has an attitude of failure attitudes, fear of success. Success ante bayon, dan transaction ante bayon. Daanee kante pederakonavichun chala comfort. Yanta comfort ante E M I lo sthe, unigupana parle. Gold vudal, roll gold bettukuna parle. Function kelly, orunavdanaal justha, originala roll, roll gold iti mana guda betkodu, original iti mana betkodu, that's, that is the problem. Philly leidana manchi dey diyavala ga, ona danlo compromise, pattu mane na hospital le these kela, badi lakshman rupee karchavutunande, sachiputamaydi, yena karchu bani koste. These kind of people totally, aru kotla, aru kotla, bichna pappani chelidharu. So andhika ne, plan jeeppe, complete plan jeeppe, first time adi ki, adi first one or two steps inter, meeta any chav, time is, a ringa ringa durugutadi mandi ga. See, the problem is. Opportunity meekavala, meer opportunity gavala, hello?
Mannequin gavala, nakavala.
So meeku opportunity gavala ante, you need to build yourself to suit the opportunity. Me ru opportunity tagattika tyarawal me. Anti gani, meeku tagattika dan tyarjeeshkuma handi. Hello, aru kotla sampaichu, evidega matladan, evidega matladan, me try jayani, gani, aru kotla these code, arvail tharagad, 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 tyarje ma handi. Mana matladu ochu, arvail kada, aru kotla raavu. So increase your capability, opportunity tagattika marandhi. Neechkundi, change yourself, increase your capacity. Opportunity box for you. Eosari, clandy mana chaadika sir, yen yatho maray, apul yed yen yatho? Aradon yen yatho, paribadon yen yatho. Sampaichu kura naina, A class in opportunity in the, nothing is lost, evan the loss, which me ochu six months. Six months low, boosari, no, last one year, six months statement, statement, you will get shock. Minimum, minimum to minimum, every month, six payments unda. I eppudu varthu, nen guda varichkunne. Ie varthu ante kada, manam use parana, manam parana, manam use kunda, but every Tuesday varthunde, every seventh varthunde, every twenty second varthunde, a date mahtan, fix re ochasam. Enta mandi varthu, eppunala income. Everybody making, chethu unda labande, ochu guda bhatle labode. React positive way, okay? Now, the opportunity anta gopa ante, to tell you frankly, direct selling industry inka general, career ga select chase koli, chala mandi inka, ide to career ga select chase kuna, dunnyadha, dusyaadha, algoral evan leid, meedie zoom lo guda evan leid, basic, one or two people, I hope Vasu as well as Anji and me are some, some of the diamond masters that be, ide to career lo, deel lo, naal gyal, idedu, manu dunnyadha, uchun, level leidu, pakka no, nedde teno, batinari teno, rose phone jesi, zoom lo, jayno menteno, ochu no batch anta, do you agree, hello?
Yes.
Ide toka career lag ochu, nadi mahtan, ide career bill yes. Career ante ela gejeepna? M B B S neat kottin tharavata, M B B S chayali four years, any it wanti, what attitude career? E four years attitude, M B B S chayaranu, nen jeeladu? Sadive studento, nirdakshan nanga javali, naal gyal, ragging jari na javali, kapal ne pethan ne boyal, switch na koyali, mansal sevalna joda, switch na chodali, blood treatment eh, anything whatever it takes for next four years, vadanta committed ga, a hospital chuturu, a medical college chuturu, there getene, a doctor, roopkundar leda, hello?
Yes.
Okay, students, ready jeepdu, vala parents naal gyal, fees gattan, ready jeepten, vada dada bolchata leda? Alla parents ka songs nu, fees gatta, roch songs nu, naavala gada, anna kundu, vada paenam upnde. Adi ga. Career means commitment. Career means.
Commitment.
Career lo, ever ite time pass chestado, life invest chase kundu. Edho college jana, mana guda chena, school chile, bela, bela ellavu, school egg bottom ela, ni darami, reach up jesa varama. Neen aidita maavu ruche, pontulgar, ever ite untaro, teacher, valu, naal kilometer maavu ki. Pontulgar school raapati, school undaga, andhika, udhayan naal kilometer parakechundu eh, chay, aayen, aayen esko nache, school, school case ko chesai, untu, saru, a cycle finish bit, puncher bit, chod. Aayen cycle puncher, master raad, nen mundi jeepu, unu ruch. So he, he, he kind of attitude to mariendu, sadhi, samantopadu, unnal, naanapori yattu. This is a career man, understand? Network marketing low fail ayavade, onnu, I'm telling, nen meeku, meekosni applar, nen ninety eight niche network marketing lonno, and my entire pillal life oh, create yet niinvalne, and my entire family is very happy, we have traveled more than thirty plus countries in the world. And manchi beautiful house kattam, and neer car, marchin car, around twenty five plus cars unda. Experience jeeptena, I have resigned settle government job. Ide career la, jasthi, me career la, career bill yes. Apply goes on, Vasu nette, downline me talakatmo, crossline me talakatmo, intlo vana manage this part, chat kaakano, evan dima ayen upkotle, ma problem gada, peelyesko mundu, alishunchar me, ayen upkuntada, leidu, me, yes, go, or, it's not our problem, you set your husband. Evan dima zorikochara, weyaparan zorikochara, patathu undu, nen jayalshin business. Ani vala warning evan, ni ratte commitment ga chuchu pichan. Success ay chupichan, am out upkotle, nen badi kalte, that's my problem, I have to set my wife, bati ladano, banu ladano, bai padanu, edho orjes nu, na business jale graavutu, nen chase chupistano, naaku, okrunu songs nu, freedom me, ane bati laduwa. That's your problem. Ante me me da, ipparida, me elani cherithru, me unna mukavatunna, me, intla wife gavchu, husband gavchu, nammat leidant, edho vala problem gada, me problem, because inta mundi yes, not wanti, any funlu, panigmalu, funlu gaabati, naasini yes, ne funlu, lasa, ne funlu, yes, gaabati, ipdu me man nammatla. Adil tappi ondu, bhaapu, mala. Nidhe gira capacity vala kartangaatledu, ne eh, nu yen yastavu, ni matle raavu, want vare, matladu chupichu, appudu kumar gada, nen ipudu naato bettuka, anal. Matladan, I am ready to learn. A guts me kala, ganapadte, they will encourage you, adi ganapadi da, me bati laduwa, chinde. So this is a career man. Career ante ela undal ante, adi ganaka meere saadin chakupote, e jeetam vindu karichan, that is, that emotional attachment undal, career me. Life okay sorryga, mali mali raad. See, man chadit, apsarega jadu, I S O, I P S O, no, no, M B B S, aapla, ayavu, hello? A career time low, mana yes, ne funlu, manu delsu, sarigas, addu leidu, yelavu, leidu, commitment leidu, sadhivsava leidu, andhika, arapara jeetalu, do you agree?
Yes.
Ipudu ka opportunity ochin, mali, ipudu guda malay, they repeat yastara. A gathalad, twenty five years before, mana age eighty seven, lo po, mana yes, twenty, negligence, innocence, vana, mana yes, twenty, daanee vala, ipparila unno, average people da. Mali, life low, malin, ka opportunity ochin, to prove yourself. It coulda time pass chase codechandi, time waste chase codechandi, evan no blame jayakandi, opportunity ne ardan geeshkoni, opportunity low, daanee tagattika mari, committed ga mundu kelti, I'm telling you, e industry ni, michin industry, boom me dale. That's why it is called, network marketing industry is the eighth wonder on the planet. Eighth wonder, seven wonders, that's me. This economical strategy, this matrix of strategy, this leverage, this compounding, time compounding, people compounding, teachings, duplication, is the economical wonder on the wor, on the, on the planet. That's why we are successful. Ya opportunity gaga bhotne, ne, ye vijayisna, e success raadu. The mechanism behind the system is powerful. Can general khajartangaadu, a general jeepala, na jaadu, general cheppe, edigadi, general neer pay. Nevadu, naadu, adukku, edigadi, iche di. Nidhe gira these kvalan, these kvalan, outrover karichali, a capacity, a vocabulary, a body language, a system, iche, ah, inta manchi opportunity iche, not wanti, capacity, a look, neidhe gira undali. Me me inte untavandi, avtradu mahtram, eni kintadu? Me me inte untavadu, avtradu mahtram, eni, me mahan jyutha, nupudi gattadi, vada tappi ondi? Hello?
Yes, sir.
Improve the magnetism. Mal choose the vibration create awala. Alant, opportunity, me chedlo. Mantra danna mette guda, teppad, teppad, naadu, vadi, mantra danna, choopay, vadi. Atomic products and atomic compensation plan, elant, jeepna, mantra danna, elant di, me elin tharavata, sambran katti, dipna, dipta, untan, plan gaani, products gaani, hemo hemo, hemo hemo, eh di, hemo hemo, hindu panyaasdi, vadi kadakal, nichali, me note ni chade, pada yalo raavali. Compounding, imperial master, diamond master, lifestyle, din gunch, meere matladu kothi, matladu kothi, people will get attracted with this magnetism. Dinka leverage guda undi. Hmm, so career ki, commitment, eh commitment undi, even commitment jair manau, you have to set yourself. Eh set chase kvali, raavoy, R N L lo, next six months, every day, nalgu reidin, karvata anki, naaku nen set jeepkunta, evro, pethaman chayaru, evro, boyaru, evro, unar, e, pretty panigmalu function kelly, vadi, business, emavudhi, pretty, pretty daanee ki, edho konge jeepta. Until unless. E meeting, e rozu raavun undal, jeepna me ru, zoom meeting, physical meeting, apply connect, just meeting, there againi, the day you are not alive, you are exempted. Tilugal jeepte, born, English jeepte. So appadu varki, ne commitment juunchal, ne sacrifice juuchal, chini chinnan, silly time pass manaya. Koppa, na rupee le betkowali. Commitment betali, disturbance pakka ne jeepkowali. You have to focus. Gurran parakechche, jatkal unda, jusar me ru. Jatkavad unda, kada, gurram mundu untundi, jatkavand, a gurran ki, ela gaddtar, eh tabi? Gurran ki kalapakki, eka leather bagla, ela beditar, kada? Hindu beditar, delsavi. Gurram kanti chupu, straight ga laga pote, daanee gira anta speed, horsepower, not wanti, horse guda, a teed justha, parikatda di. Gurran ki gantal laga pote, naatin jasundi. Parikatna, naanukuntu, naatin yas, akad keldadi, mind mahtram parikatna, naanukuntu, kana naatin yas, kalakunat wanti, capacity, jeepna, abi divert ite, mano divert ekho. Andhika ne, a gurran ki gantal gaddtar. Ye gurran ki, gantal anto, adi chala fast ga parikatundu, denke, e, e gantal undu, adi naatin yasundu, kana parikatna, shala mandi distribute, leidu, vada mahtram, mind lo mahtram, etami ro, jashasna, feeling undu, yen jeed. Okay, general commission guda match avad, nelaki, yen yas, anta alishutna, evan jisutna, etami ela jala, alishutna, evan evan jeepda, alishutna, kana evan jeepdu. Yeval jisutna, jeepna, feel eh, underro, you apply phone yastad, eva meeting kella, so stam, phone jeekunutu, baundu, phone jeekunutu, baundu, ida alishutna, roz motan, yes, anukuntu, yen jeed. Dear friends. Inkor chala mandi, e, e, general jeepala, general to matladali, eh, eh, manala gaadu, elipadu, vadi, vadi, job jaskundu, nelako, yavvail, mupper, mustu badastadu, diba, dant obethka, daun, daru, vishnu jeepna, e boom me, evan, evan product jasna, evan, e service jasna, mansal ke jayali, me ru, nen, potka jeetla. Meel ekad, ne job jasna, meekh opportunity, ichi no, not wanti, me boss, evarkana, edo product amal chinde, evarkana, edo service, simal chinde, mansal ki service jayal chinde. So it coulda mahtram mansal jeepala, nen jeepan, maru, jeepta, gaddal ki, jader ki, evan jeepta? Mansal ke jeepal, it coulda guda, eh, jeepal, manal ke, ebal, eh, product, manal ke, amal, even, gada, gada matha guda, mansal ke, amal, gada kamle, gada, gada, bittay, matha undu, kada, adi guda manski, e no, amal. Try to understand, this is a beautiful opportunity, ne gavshu, prati parameter, indlo beautiful ga design yes, evan there againi. Elant wonderful subject, jeepna?
So, यकड़मे मुन्नुच्को आलो, मीरे ए क्या टिकेरो ओक्सार सिलेक्ट जेस्कोने, वोको वेले दिनी बनिकोस्तान अन्ते दिनी जाइन्डी। पनिकराग्बोते रणनदल्दो, मूढंदल्दो स्कीमो, यस कैमरो उठ्यो वट्किली जायनवन्। I am telling you my dear friends. Because me, me गोडा I respect you a lot, because you don't have to waste your time. मेरि दिनी सूट कानन कुट्टे, इल्लन्ने इल्लन्ने यस्कोच, meरु नैनु, whatever it is. पोनि दिस सूट आउथानु नैनु दिनी चेकल्लु आउथान अन्ते, low it hundred percent, as a committed. Success out अनि जाइन्डी। Success which पारीपोट अनि येदि दिदि। हिम्मम जपारन नाग राजसार, साइंस राजसार, no problem, नैरताउ। मीरा राधो, फोन कार्बन्नी, कान्फ्रेंसमे माट्लाड्दौ। Learn something to do this business. You can succeed in this business. Avishwaad the best everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you sir, Doctor Garu, Srinivas Garu. So, सारानाट्लिगा एबडो, एमोहिम अम्मा ले यार अन्ते, दानिके मी, दानिकी गोडा इन्ता कला प्लानलो जप्नाट्लिगा, मनके क्वालिफिकेशन आउसर्ले दान्डे। So, ना बैग्रोन्ड जुस्कुन नैनु, डिग्री फेल। But, ईरोज गोडा नैनु, रण्डो एमोहिम्स इच्छनु, अंदलु वोकती, डॉक्टर किच्छनु, आइने एमडी। एमडी स्पेशलिस्टो, twenty-three years नुच्ची, आइना फील्डलो उन्नाडो। अटुवान्ड पर्सन केरोज नैनु, एमोहिम इच्छेसुच आफ्टरन्नो। सार जप्नाट्लिगा, so मना वन रुपालु प्रोडक्टले उठानिके वेल्ना, कोणत कच्चो आउथदि। मनको चेदि योर रुपालु प्रॉफिट। So, नीनेरोज रण्डी एमोहिम्स इस्ते, so नैनु कोण्नत पदिवेलके ओकोवटी। वोकती पन्ने डुवेल एन्नि दान्डल्ल किच्छनु, वोकती पन्ने डुवेल ऐदुन्नल्ल किच्छनु। So, नाको मूढंदल्ल कच्चाइन्दी, ऐदुवेल रुपाल मिगिल्नी, ओकरोज। So, इधिए पनि मन प्रथिरोज चेकलेकिते, इप्र सारानाट्लिगा, प्रियम मैडम गरु, अंतर रिटेल प्रॉफिट तिस्कुन रान्ते, अंदरकी अवकाश मिन्दी। So, रियल्गा आइना, अ प्रोडक्टु गुरिंची चप्तन अपुडो, so इटुवान्डिल्ल मकावाल्सुन्दि, अन्यपेसेसे, चेप्पे अंता गोडा विनेसी, अर्धन चेस्कोनी, आइना गोडा रिकमन जेटनिके रेडी आउथुन्नर। So, दानिकोसन चाला मंदी एधिर चुस्ताउन्नर। So, मीरो, चिन्न चिन्न प्रोडक्टले उठ्चु, तप्पलेदु, दान्तोटी मनम कनेक्ट आउछु। But, इकड़ा सार चप्नाट्लिगा, मीरो ओका मंची लेक्सरी लाइफ लीड चयालेन अन्ते, अदेदो स्कीमलु, स्कैमलु, ऐदुन्नल्ल गट्टन्डी, लापोते पदिवेल गट्टन्डी, अन्यो देदो, रण्डुन्नर भिगाट्टन्डी। इटुवान्डी चुस्कोनु उठ्ते, so, चाला मंदी इप्परिकी गोडा, नैनु पदिवेल गट्टयानु, नाको मूढु कोट लोस्तै। एक्कनिन्छ लोस्तै, यवर इस्तर अन्डे। So, एबडो, वन रुपाल संपायित्स्थनु, मी पेरेंट्सुन झुड़न्डी। So, इप्पनिन्छ चुस्ताउन्तरु, रोजका ऐदुन्नल्ल संपायित्स्थनिकी, एन्ता कस्तपड्डुन्तरु। So, अटुवान्डी दिनी ईरोज मनम, इवी संपायित्स्थनिकी, ईरोज नैनु ऐदुवेल संपायित्स्थनु, प्राउड गाउन्दी नाको। So, एत्ला संपायित्स्थनु, नैनु मॉर्निंग लेची, सार जप्नाट्लिगा, नीटीगा रेडी आई। Professionalगा, वेल्ली, वोक डॉक्टर तोटु माट्लाडी, आइना कावासुन्न इन्फॉर्मेशन इच्छी, आइन अडिगिन्न पोशन्स कांसर्जेस्से डब्लू इच्छनी। So, नैनु बाइपल्ले। So, नातोपाटो, केशो कुमार गरु उच्चनारु, डायमंड मास्टर, तोड्गा। So, सिंपल्गा, मनपनि मनम चेस्सुन, सार चप्नाट्लिगा, अ प्रोडक्टो, अटुवान्डी प्रोडक्ट असल मुँदु मनकु उन्दी, मनचैतुलो उन्दै अन्ते, दानिक अद्रस्तुन्नो फील आउछ। Even म बाबुकी, seven years, वाडु गोडा रेगुलर्गा यूज चेस्ताउन्नरे मोहिन्ड। So, we are loving, नैनु एबडो गोडा, नाक देल्सन नैनु नाइत्ते देनिकी टैबलेट एस्कुलेद। मावाड़की seven years इद्वर्गिन्न, देनिकी टैबलेटु, सिरपुलु, देनिकी वाडलेद। So, we are using all the supplements. So, मंची अपॉर्चुनिटी अन्डे, अंदर गोडा उपयिकिन्छुकोणे। Thank you, Doctor Srinivas Garu, Madam Garu.
Yes, for the best remains. So, I want to introduce my support in my house.
Yeah, madam. Your permission आउसुनु, यवर सपोर्ट आउसुनु, यवर्ने रिक्वेस्ट चेस्ताउनु। Yes, yes. You give your freedom.
So, एबडो सार गरु दिल्लु गल्लु गल्लु, मावाड़ एकु गोलेदु, कनान्डे, नाको एटीकेशन सेंटर गोड़दिदि। नैनु मॉर्निंग तेन्ताट्टीके वेल्लालान्डे, मावाड़ा एटीकेशन सेंटर गोचित्तन, नाकरु कोचुन्ने नैनु वेल्ला। So, मॉर्निंग ईरोज ओका फोटो गोड बेट्टुन्ना नैनु, रेपु एन्वर्सरे, केक कटिंग उन्दी रण्डे आइने। आल्दी ईरोज गुमामी सेस्टो सेंटल्लो तिस्कुन फोटो। So, thank you madam, thanks for your support, चाला मंदीकी गोडा इंस्पिरेशन, welcome madam, Janki Garu.
So, good evening everybody. My name is Janki Srinivas. I am from Guntur, I am a housewife. So, प्लान गुरिंची चाला सिंपल्गा, चाला भाग अर्थमा एटिका चाला भाग चप्पेस्थानु, Vasu Garu। So, अलागे, साह, Vasu Garu, प्लानलो डब्बू एन्तुन्न नानु चुपिच्छारु। Srinivas Garu, अ डब्बू यला संपायन चाला नानु चप्परु। So, इरेंडु गोडा चाला इम्पॉर्टेन्ट। Basic गा मनके, प्रोडक्ट अनेदि, अन्ते का बिजनेस अनेदि, product based business। Simpleगा एन जप्तुन अन्ते कम्पनी, प्रोडक्टमीर वाडन्डी, feel आवन्डे, recommend चयन्डी। Use it, feel it, share it, simple। ईमूढ़ू तप्पा मनो, ईवेरे एयो चेस्स्तुन्तर। ईमूढ़ू चेकुन्डा, ओका प्लान चप्पेसे, अन्ते, प्लानलो मणी उन्दी, मनक नाचिन्दी, वेन्ने एल्पे वाड़क्लान जप्ताउ। Sign जायमन्डा, ID says। अन्ते, ईमूढ़ू काकुन्डा, इन्केदो चयालनी अवराइत्त चुस्तारु, वाड़ वेन्ने कबड्डु उठ्तर। तनी ईमूढ़ी यला चयालन एतमात्र नेचुकोणि। प्रोडक्ट यला वाडाली, ट्रानिंग तिस्कुन्डी। So, feel आवन्डी, दानी यला शेयर चयालन एतने नेचुकोणि, मी अप्लाइंस निकेरन्चे। Success out तर। So, इन्कोड अन्डे, सार, ladies अन्दर गरु, एन्दुकु सपोर्ट चयाली, बिजनेसलान्ते, नैनु एन्दुकु सपोर्ट चेस्तन्ना ना चप्तनु, सारकी। सार संपायित्स्थन इन्कमलो, ninety percent यवर कच्चबेट्तर। माके कच्चबेट्तर। So, नाकु, पिल्ललेकी। So, only ten percent, पापु, ten percent गादु, वोक टू percent मात्र वाड़क्लानु सार कच्चबेट्टुन्तर। अनकदा। So, मनक बाजार एल्टे, एक्कु शॉपले एमुन्ड एयान्डे? बट्टल शॉपलु, बंगारू शॉपलु, फैंसी शॉपलु, ईवे एक्कु उन्डय? ईवान्ने अवरक आउसर्नु, आड़वाल्लके कदा? Ninety percent बिजनेस अंता गोडा, ladies दे। So, कच्चु गोडा, ladies दे। अन्दकने, ninety percent कच्चु मंदाइन अपुडो, हस्बैंड एदैना इन्कम कोसन, ओका प्रायत्न जेस्तुन्डे, दानिक hundred percent सपोर्ट चयाली। तनी hundred percent सपोर्ट चलिन्दकन्डे, ninety percent मनमे एन्जॉय चेस्तुन, आंगाबट्टी। महाइत्ते पापुम, वाड़ली एमुन्ड आयान्डे, जेन्सकी, ओका पान्टु शर्तु। अन्ते ना? महाइत्तो फंक्शन एदो, ओका ब्लेजर एवुनु पुन्तारै मान्ते। माक कबोडलो, माइन्टलो, जस्ट कबोड मोत्तम मेदा, ओका रैकलो मात्रमे सारै उन्तयान्डे। एंटर वाल कबोड मोत्तम, नाई पिल्लले एमुन्डे। अन्ते, यवरू एक्कु कच्चबेट्तुनु, यवरू एक्कु एन्याजस्तुनु, हस्बैंड पंच इन्कमली। तनी सपोर्ट उच्चरप्रिके कोणत मंदी, ladiesो, just ninety percent वाड़कोसन कच्चबेट्तुना कोडा, एन्याजस्तुना कोडा, सपोर्ट विषयानिको उच्चरटप्परिकी, ओका thirty percent, twenty percent मात्र जेस्तुकरण्डि। कना अधिकोडा वाड़ तप्पु कादन नैन्टन, इन्दकन्डे, वाड़की बिजनेस अर्धनकालेदे म बहुसा। इन्ता के सार चप्नाट्लिगा, इन्त्यमुँद गतल्ला, कोणत मंदी चेसिन्ना तप्पुलु वाल्ला कावाछु, कोणत तेलीका लास्ट चेसुन्नची, मणिनी। So, दानी वाल्ला, वाड़ सपोर्ट चयालेको छु। कनी इप्पड़ वर्गी अवराइत्त बिजनेसलो उन्नारो, वाड़ फिजिकल मीटिंग्सकी, जूम मीटिंग्सकी, लाइन्वॉल्व चयन्डी, ladiesकोडा। So, वाड़का अर्धमाउतुन्डु, नैनु, मावार ओकरै कादु, so, बिजनेसलो चाला मंदी उन्नारो, चाला मंदी success out उन्नारो। So, नालान्डी ladies गोडा चाला मंदी उन्नारो, मावारकन्ना गोडा इन्का successfulगा जेसै वाड़ उन्नारो। ईबिजनेस चेस्ते कनका, definitely मैनिंदल्ला success out तामु, दिनी वाला एलान्डी लास्ट उन्ददु, अन्यजप्पेसे वाड़का अर्धमाइन रोजू। चाला भाग सपोर्ट चेस्तर। चाला भाग सपोर्ट चेस्तर। एन्ता, अ ladiesो, अन्ते, चाला, चिन्न चिन्न विषयालके, साटिस्फाई आउथरु, एमोशनल फील आउथरन्डी। निजंगा ladies न अर्धन एस्कुन्डे, काविगार चप्तरु, एन्डे? मोर मलिपुल देची, मुप्पाइपल जेन्स को उच्चन्त, ladies, अंता, अल्पसंतोष्लु ladies। So, अ टेक्निक कानेदि, जेन्सकी तेलियाली। So, वाड़ चादम मुप्पाइपल यला चेन्स कोवाल्लनेदि। So, अवन्नी कोड अन्डे, मनके बिजनेसलो, ई डायरेक्ट सेलिंग इंडस्ट्रीलो, ओका फामिली यला उन्डालानेदि कोडा नेपिस्तरन्डी। So, मनम यला उन्डे, मन बिजनेस out तदनेदि गोडा, डायरेक्ट सेलिंगलो उन्तुन्द काबट्टे, डायरेक्ट सेलिंग नैनु एबडो गोडा वोकती नम्तन्डी। इदि पर्सन टू पर्सन बिजनेस कादु, फामिली टू फामिली बिजनेस अन्नम्तन्ड। So, फामिली मोत्तम प्रोडक्ट वाडितेने, फामिली मोत्तम प्रोडक्ट्स पट्ल पॉसिब्लिगा उन्तेने, डायरेक्ट सेलिंगलो बाउन्डु। So, फामिली मोत्तम, इदि मा बिजनेस, अनकोली, ओका जेन्सो, ओका ladiesो, ओकरके नम्मकमुन्डी, ओकरै प्रोडक्ट वाडितेकादु। एंटर फामिली मोत्तम प्रोडक्ट वाडाली, एंटर फामिली मोत्तम मीटिंग्सले इन्वॉल्वावाली, बिजनेस गुन चेकलिस्ट तेलिस्कोवाली, वाड़ डायरेक्ट इन्वॉल्व होपयान। इदोका मंच बिजनेस, मनिंटलो ओका पर्सन जेस्तुन्नारु अन्ते, दानिक मनम hundred percent सपोर्ट चयाली। अनि प्रत्यी वोकर अनुकुनेविदंगा, अवराइत्त बिजनेसले एक्टिव उन्नारु, वाड़ चयाली, अदि मी अप्लाइंस चयाता, काउंसिलिंग इपिच्छन्डी। Definitely के जरुतुन्दन्डी, so wish you all the best, thank you.
Thank you madam, great words, so very inspiring, thank you, realगा, so मैनि रिकाडु गोड जेस्कुन्डा उन्ना। चाला मंदीकी जुझिस्ताउ, कच्चितंगा, so सार गोडा चाला चप्पुनारु मी गुरिचे, last मीटिंगलो गोडा, मी वॉइस विन्ना नैनु। Last मीटिंग, संजू गरु, गेस्ट कबेल्चुन्नारु, so great madam, thank you, thanks for joining madam. So, अलाने, मनतोपाटो मीटिंगलो, diamond master सुनरान्डे, so मा वाइफ गोडा मीको स्पेशलगा थैंक यू चप्पुनारु।
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you madam. So, इकड़ा, रैंक वॉइस विन्वाइट चस्तर अन्डे, diamond masters। Kesho Kumar Garu, welcome sir. So, इन्के अवर्ना, diamond master, यान्त्रिजे चाहन्डी।
Good evening sir.
Good evening sir.
Mr. Srinivas Agarwal, Namaskar Alain. And the kind of Srinivas Agarwal, in my background, one and a half month back, seminar, one day seminar, success seminar. And three days training, अकड़ा three days training, Srinivas Agarwal interact out, जरिगिल्दि। He is nice gentleman and nice motivator, also, इन्चे, personalism, motivation, आन्दे कैना। आरोज नाकर नैनु नैनु जस्तुन, मनम मीटिंगलो नैनु, Sir, MD गरु नातो, diamond master आवाल्यान्ने सन, अन्तन्तन्ने निर्णय दिस्कोने, मा टीमलो मैन वर्क चेसी। सारी चमु, just miss I, diamond Vash, Vashu गरुके, चरणरोज मास्क, एन्दुकन्टेनु, foreign trip वेल्टम वाल्ना, ई गैप उच्चन्डा, गैप तन्ने, काम उठ्तम कालेदु। We are trying for the second session, Decemberलो, second session, अवटन प्रयोज्युस्नु, माइली। अलागे, Srinivas Agarwal and Janki Garu, Madam Garu, मेरि पड़वर्गी चप्पिना इन्फॉर्मेशन कानि, चाला अभुतंगाउन्दी, अंदर पाइपर एटीवी। एन्दुकन्टेनु, रोज प्लान, प्लान, अन्ने चप्कोटु, अबे बेल्ट आपुगनी, फामिलीलो, इल्ला अटैच चयालेनेदि, मेर चप्पिन्डान्तो, चाला एकि बेविस्नानु, एन्दुकन्टेनु। This is the family business, अन्ने मैन जप्ताउन्डा, कोणत मी, ladies निच्रावर्ण वाल्ना, इन्का अवतानकी, रेटिंग तू, उस्सहान जोडिच्छनाट्य अन्डे? Thank you sir, इदि अवकाश उच्चन्ड।
Yes sir, thank you, Kesho Kumar Garu. So, ईरोज, गेस्टलगा, कोणत मंदी, sales masters गोडा मनतोपाटो जायिन्डारान्डे, अंदलो, भागा, तकु टाइमलो, famous अन्नाट्य अन्डे, प्रियम मैडम गरु ने इन्वाइट चेस्ताउन्ना। Welcome madam, मीरो गोडा कोणी, tips मावालाक चप्ते, फलाउतर। Welcome madam. मीरो, unmute चेस्कोच, madam, मेरकोस्तो। Yeah.
Unmute out लेदा? Okay, meanwhile. वाले rejoin अवन्ड।
Yeah, rejoin and avoid madam, मजलो गोडा इदो कटाइवोच्छिन्मारे। Next to, Madam Garu, मीरो, मा वॉइस विन्किस्नु गदा, प्रियम Madam Garu? Yeah, ओक्सारी, rejoin and avoid madam. Disconnect आएसी, मल्ली rejoin अवन्डे।
Meanwhile, you can, invite, Ajay Nellil.
Ajay Nellil, welcome sir. Ajay Nellil Garu, welcome sir.
Yeah, good evening sir, all of you good evening. Sir, आडिया वाली, चाहिदे? गेस्ट ना वॉइस?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you sir. My name is Prasanna Veranjilil, sales master Guntur, नम्मी बिजनेसलो परिसंजयस्नु, मैन नम्मेन्टाइट, डाटो सिन्नोस्तारन्डी। माग एबडो चप्तनै उन्तर, सार, पतिबी, चिन्न पल्लोल्ला कुच्चबेटी, बिजनेसले यला उन्डालंगी, यला उन्डालंग, निर्त्तु, ईरोज नाक इप्पुरियाट्टम निर्पित्रनु, डाटो सिन्नोस्तारु, तिलेतिन्डा धनवादाल्टिरियस्तुन्नर। Sales master गा, इन्तर वात्ता, इकन्नाती गायलिन्स यला उन्डालंग, जप्गोड़ सार, चाला नाकु निर्त्तु उन्नेर। माक एलान्डी मन्त्र दरतुन गोडा, माक गंतोरिलो, चाला अद्रस्तुन्दा भागिस्तुन्ने। इन्दिकन्डे, माकु, मन्त्रकादन्डी, माकु देवड़ु तो समानु, सार सिन्नोस्तारु। पतिरी गोडा, माकु टीम जेस आर्गनेशनलो, निगुंगा अन्ने के, संपायित्स्थन अन्ना, आलोचनैत लेगन्ने। यटामी बिजनेस इन्स्पॉर्टेन्ट कारणम, इन्टेन्डे, डॉक्टर गरु गानिन्डु, माक लिस्टिन्ना अपॉर्चुनिटी गानिन्डु। ई टीम जेस आर्गनेशनलो, thousand मंदिनी, ओका millionaire गा तोडालेन, नैनु कोरिकन्डी। अनुन्ने एक्सपीरियंस एदित्ते उन्दो, नातोपाटो उन्गोड़ दी एक्सपीरियंसु, ओका विज्ञमंदिकी एक्सपीरियंस निर्पित्ती। ओका millionaire गा चयालेन, नैनु कोरिक्ती रोज, बिट्टिन अन्ने दिस्कोनी, मातो, और चेबिस्तुन्नारु। ई वर्कलो भागन्गा, मैन गोडा कस्तपड्डु, ई six monthsलोने, ददबुगमा टीम अंता गोडा चाला मंदी कस्तपड्डु उन्नारु। प्रोडक्ट सेलिंग जेटनु गनी, प्रोडक्ट ट्राइनिंग विश्नु गनी, चाला मंदी एक्सीडेंट गने नेचुकोण्डारु। निजंगी यटामी कम्पनी, चाला wonderful opportunity अन्डे, निजंगा, ई कम्पनीके गुरिंची नैनु तिस्कोटन कारणम, दिनी नैनु तिस्कोटन कारणम इन्टेन्डी, कम्पनी नैनु चूज जेस्कोटन कारणम इन्टेन्डे। Main important, मनको प्लान गा चुस्कुन्डे, सर, world wise गा ओके ओका प्लान अन्डि, यमरकैन ओकलागे उन्तुन्डी, दिन्द्रो, मार्कलु, सिर्कलु उन्डवु। अन्डे, मंत्री जुस्कुन्डे, ओका टार्गेट अन्डु एमुन्डदु, मनु इन्ता पच्चेद चयाल, अन्ता पच्चेद चयाल नैदु। ओकसारी मनु एजेंट इन्तर वात्ता, एजेंट इन्तर वात्ता, रोजकी नालिवेल रुपाल, यनवेल दिस्तुन, अवकाश मनकी बिजनेसलो उन्दी। आतर वात्ता, ई सिस्टम गानी, फलाइते, मनु, ई यटामी सिस्टम गानी, लेदा, मनम मन्त्र गानी, अप्लाइन गानी, मनम नम्मी, मनु, आ सिस्टम गानी, फलाइते। निजंगा सर, ओका five years ले, इंपीरियल मास्ट इत्ते, ओका फैसी इन्कम अन्तिस्तुन, अवकाशम यटामी बिजनेसलो उन्दी। वेयर वेयर कम्पनीस, मैन चाला जेस्सन सर, कानी वाड़तो पोल्चुकुन्ती, प्लान अनेदि, चाला world wise गा जुस्कुन्डे, wonderful plans सर, product vision अन्ते, external product अन्डे। अन्डे, कम्पनी गोडा रूल इन्डेन्डे, absolute quality, absolute price गोडा, मनकी, ओका slogan तो उच्चन, कम्पनीस अरिदि, product vision लो उच्चस्ते, global supply and global source अन्डि। रपन्च गाप्तंगा, supply जेस्तु, ओका, एकड़ा गोडा product लोट लापुन्डा, सरपरा जेस्तुन्डा, कम्पनी अदिन उन्दी अन्डे, अटामी मात्रमेस। वाड़ एल्ट्रो प्रोड्स आउछु, बीडी ग्रोड्स आउछु, कॉस्मिटिक्स आउछु, एदियाना सरे, पत्ती ओका product गोडा, non-eten चेक जेस्टी, customer किच्छे, ओका कंपनी अदिन उन्दी अन्डे मटकु। ईरोज यटामी मात्रमेस, सर, यटामी नम्कोटनी कारणम, निजंगा सर, ईरोज मा पिल्ललो गोडा, मीर अन्नाट्टगा वास्तेरु, मा पिल्ललो गोडा, जस्ट five years, seven years, मा पिल्ललो। रोज ऑफ-आईटी, ऑफ-आईटी, एमोहिम्स आइग्वाल्स स्कूल केल्पन्तरु, वाड़ एनर्जीलाउसन, निजंगा, नैनु ई, एमोहिम्मो आर्ट्सन्ड गिन्चो, ओका जरंग गानी, जलुबगनी, पिल्लल गिन्चो, निचोले। वाड़ आपीगा स्कूल केल्म, आपीगा आउछुन्ना। अटुवान्डी मंच प्रोड्स मन देग्रुन्न, ई बिजनेस चेस्कोटनिको, रोजकी, अलागैते, रिप्री मैडम, रोज ओका ऐदुवेल नुच्ची, पदिवेल त संपायित्स्थनु, ई टीमलो, चाला मंदी, माक डिजन जेस्टलो, चाला मंदी उन्नारु। So, दिनु केडेरिगा चूज जेस्कुन्डे, सार सिन्नोस्तारन्डु, ओका रोजकी, ऐदुवेल नुच्ची, पदिवेल रिटेल प्रॉफिट मी संपायित्स्थ कोचु, तर्वात्तो, ओका, तू ईयस निन्की, फाइव ईयस दाक, दिन्तो, मनु, केडेरिगा चुजु, कस्तपड्डित्स्थन, निजंगा चप्तनु। आर कोटली इन्कम गादन्डी, इन्का एक्कुच अवकाशिन्गोडा उन्दी, नालके। अन्ते, रिटेल प्रॉफिट मेरि इन्का इक्सपरेट, अदि इप्पुरिदाक मी चप्पिन्दी, प्लानलो चप्पेसरु, रिटेल प्रॉफिट गोडा पोल्चुकुन्डे, मनु, minimum ten courses दाक, तिस्कुन, अवकाशी बिजनेसलो उन्दी। सर, इप्पुरिल स्टार्टिंगलो, मनु इप्पुर बिगिनिंगलो उन्नाम, इप्पुनिन्ची मन्त्र एजप्तिन्दो, एन जप्तुन्नारु, अप्लाइन एजप्तुन्न, सिस्टनी फलाइ, वाड़नु, फलाइत्ती, वाड़ अनकाले मनु गिन्ते। निजंगा सर, सिन्नोस्तारु, मम्मलो, ओका millionaire गा तोडालेन, कोरिका, आइनु, एदित्ते कोरिका, एदित्ता अनुकुन्नारु, आइनु, उम्मचेकुन, मीन कस्तपड्डी, मा ओका स्टैंड मीन तिस्कोनी, कस्तपड्डी टीम तिस्कोस्तु, प्रोडक्ट मुमिन जिसकुन्डु, चेस्कुन्डु, ई बिजनेस मुँदु दिस्केल्तुन्नु सर। इटुवान्डी अपॉर्चुन्ड, डाटा, सिन्नोस्तारुकी, निजंगा, निजंगा धनवादाल्टिरियस्नु, thank you so much sir, wonderful sir, thank you so much.
Thank you, Veranjil Garu, great sir, great, thank you, yes madam, Priyam Madam Garu. So, मी माइको आनायन्डी। Unmute आयन्डी madam, मी माइको, unmute लेन्ना वन्डी, मीर माट्लाड्छु।
Thank you, thank you so much Vasu Garu, and for inviting me. And first of all, I would like to thank my mentor, Doctor Srinivas, for making us success. And only due to trainings and, अन्ते, Doctor Srinivas, you car trainings, लो, I, निच्नाट्वान्डी, माको, educating, educating all the team members, the way he trains us, it is extraordinary, sir. Because in the international level trainings, निजंगा, what I feel is, the international level लो उन्तै, माकु trainings and health concepts कानि, products गुरिंची कानि, plan गुरिंची कानि। एन्ता चिन्न minute point गोडा, असलो, चाला detail गजत्तरु, यटामी ओका, कम्पनी ओका profile गुरिंची कानि, प्रत्यी रोज गोडा माकु, zoom sessions लो, without fail। निजंगा सर, आपड़ापड़ू, बाइट, वेल्ली, fieldwork जेस्ना, पड़िकी, मल्ली अगेन, मल्ली, नाइनकी, sharp, एकड़ उन्ना, कानि, मीटिंग चयरम। It is all about his dedication and, तनु, दिनकी चेय, importance, even तन पर्सनल लाइफ कन्ना कोडा, माकु trainings कोसन, तन, निजंगा, चाला डेडिकेन, तनु चाला नेचुकुन्डमान्डी। Dedication, dedication towards work, that is what behind me, रन्नार गदा, इन्ता, काहिन्त, short time लो, एत्ला success आयन्ड, that is what, what I learnt from him. अन्ते, सारकी, असलो, यटामी, कादु, एयान्ना कान्ना, चयास्ना, आउसर्नु, लेहेद, नी पारिसित्लो उन्तर, सर, he is already there, but still, ओका newcomer, ओका newcomer, नालान्डी, ओका newcomer, एत्लाइत्ते, strive, strives hard। आ लेवल्लो तनु, असल, अत्ल चेस्ताउन्डे, really, we are, we always inspired by his activities, sir. And moreover, तनिक्चेट वान्डी, health समझिन्न, knowledge कानि, and plan मेदा, अंदरकी grip रावडम कोसम, तन पेट्टे efforts कानि, even ओकम, ओका senior most experienced, चाला years नुच्ची, एन्नो राकाल, बिजनेसले जेस्नु, वाड़तो गोडा, मा टीमलो उन्ना, प्रत्योकलम, नैने गदन्डी, मा टीमलो उन्ना, प्रत्योकलम गोडा, divet लो गुच्चबेट्ते, definitely we will win। And इन्कोकटी, एकड़नक, prospects देग्रकी, वेल्लेड आपुडो, चेसेड आपुडो, वाड़लु, अन्ते, वाड़ला, background एन्टी, first of all, वाड़ला, background एन्टी, वाड़ला, level of knowledge एन्टी, वाड़ला, level of understanding एन्टी, ईवान्नी गोडा तेलिस्कोनी, वाड़ लेवल्की वेल्ली, मनम वाड़लकी, अदि, सब्जेक्ट एक्सप्लेन चैटम, and personality, and, मना, personality गोडा, matters a lot, इन्ता के सार चप्नाट्लिगा, नुबु, अंतमुँदुनु, वेदो, उन्नुंडाव। So, अदि, माइन्लो, उन्नुंडदु वाड़लकी, फैमिली मेम्बर्स एकदा, बाइट वाड़लकोडा, but, what about, after coming into this yatami? Yatami लो कोचिन्तर्वात्त, नुवे एन्टी, नी changes एन्टी, नी character एन्टी, like, it matters a lot again. So, this is all what we need to check once again. And, प्रत्यी product गोडा, extraordinary product अन्डे, and definitely, मनम मुँदु, मना जानकी मैडम चप्पिनाट्य, we use it, feel it, and share it, अन्नाट्यगा, मा ग्रुपलो उन्ना, प्रत्यी टीम मेम्बर्स, प्रत्यी वाड़लकोडा, फामिलीलो, ओका lifestyle आईपीन्डन्डी, yatami products use जेढ़ु, मनेदि। They start, अबड़म, यटामी तोटे, अन्ते, एन्ड अबड़म गोड़, यटामी तोटे, मा पिल्ललाइत्ते, अम्मानु वेस्कुन्नाव, डाडीनु वेस्कुन्नाव, अन्यानु वेस्कुन्नाव, मा पाँदरीकी रोज इच्ची पड्गो एड़तुदे। So, अन्ना, आईपी अन्डु, मा lifestyle, and even, मा किचनलो कानि, बर्डरूमलो कानि, washroom, everywhere, अन्ते, माकु, जान, जानकी मैडम, निश्री न्वर्सर, गनी, माक चप्तर, मीरी, प्रत्यी product गोडा, ओका कश्मा देग्रकी, वेल्लीनापुडु, मेर यूज, यूज जेसी, feel आइयी, चप्पेड़ वान्डी, माट्ला, definitely, वेयरै उन्डे, एयान्डे, even, ना downlines गोडा, नैनु अदेच्यप्पन्ना। मोत्तम मुक्ते, सार गत्पयाना, प्रोग्रेसिव गा, ओकोकटी, यूज जेस्तु उन्नान्डी। And, जानकी मैडम, नैनु वर्क जेस्ना अपुडो, last time, ओका, ओका कश्मरको, ओका टिच्यामु, वाड़, अवाडर बाउन्ड, review बाउन्डी, every time, when you meet, अगेन, वाड़नी, इन्कोक्सार, meet आयन, अपुड़ि, इन्कोक्को, कोत्ता product, वाड़की, introduce जेप्रियान्ड, जेपिटिक, चाला बाउन्ड, नान नाचिन भाग। So, अत्ल चिन्न चिन्न टिप्स, follow, to, yeah, I am really enjoying this yatami business, and, मनना, कारलो, ना fast drive एल्थन अपुडो, that is the way, अन्ते, आ highway लो नैनु, नैनु वर्क चेस्से, दान अन्डी, वाचुसर, मिन नम्मरु, like, ten thousand rupees कोसम, ओका, one month कच्चबेट्यदान्डी। दान मेस, two wheeler मेदा वेल्लेदान, एदि, डाइली, ओका hundred kilometers, daily hundred kilometers, drive जेस्कोनी, वेल्ली, ten thousand rupees कोसम, one month कच्चबेट्यदान्डी। मनना, कारलो, अलावेल्थाउन्डे, अलार, drops, अन्ना, emotionalगा। Really, I am enjoying this yatami business, and, टीम नुच्ची, first imperial master, एवरान, नैनु गोडा चाला, ego गा, एदु, एदु जोस्ताउन्नानु, definitely, we will be there, within very few years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Priyam Madam Garu, great madam, really inspiring, realगा, नैनु, ओका हाइटरवेड उच्च, ten years अन्डे, ना, हाइटरवेड उच्च, अपुडो, first, ना, career रिक्रेस्टार्टेन, अपुडो, first month, ना, income, ten thousand। So, वाल्स जुस्कुन्डे, रोज विटेन thousand दिस्कोटुनु, इप्पड़ गोडा, नैनु चप्ता, प्लान चेप्पेड़ अपुडो। So, मनकी, sponsorship money नै, six lakhs work इस्तुन्नारु, per month, अन्ते, परिदे, twenty thousand, मनो, दान इन्ची कच्चबेट्कोवाछु। So, अदे, twenty thousand की, नेलन्ता कस्तपड्यो, वाड़नु, मनम चुस्ताउन्नाव, so, ओकसारी, mindset, changes कोनी, दिन गुरिंची, positive गनकम, मेर थिंग चेकलेकिते, this is the real opportunity, अन्यजप्पेसे। So, एदित्ते, अन्ते, twenty twenty three लो, नैनु पेटुकुन्ना अवन्डी, अन्ते, life scenario लो, नैनु रास्कुन्ने, अन्ते, रोज पदिवेल संपायित्स्थाली। So, दानी, reach out जरिगिल्दि, so, last month गोडा, three lakhs, twelve thousand rupees, income दिस्कोटन जरिगिल्दि। So, अदे, twenty twenty five के, नैनु रास्कुन्डी, परिदे, one lakh। So, as a royal master गा, definitely गा, अदि गोडा नर्वर्तदि, so, दानिकी, मा टीम सपोर्टू, अलाने, Doctor Srinivas Garu, लान्टोलु, इंस्पिरेशन, मीलान्टो, वाल्लु, motivation, realगा, मा टीमलो, नैनु अनुकुन्डा, ladies वारे, चाल तकु उन्नार, मा टीमलो, अब्राहम गरु, स्पेशलगा, निकासिन्न, पडल्ला चप्ता उठ्तरु। Ladies, raw, business, ladies, raw, ladies, raw, business, इन्दिकार अन्डे, मिमलु जुस्तैन, अर्थमाउतुन्दि, जानकी मैडम, जुस्तै, माकु, इप्पड़ आइत्ता, सुया। इन्ता knowledge उन्दी, इटुवान्डो, वाल्लु, एन्दुकु, माकु, main, तिच्कोलेपुतुनाव, अन्यजप्पेसे। So, thank you, Janki Madam, मिमलु चुस्सी, inspire out, जरिगिल्दि, रेपट निन्ची, मा मैडमलु गोडा, नैनु, अन्ते, तनु, बिजनेस बैकेन्डलो, कच्चितंगाइत्तनाकु, सपोर्ट जेस्नारु, but, मीटिंग्सलो गोडा, तन्नी, इन्वॉल्व चेस्तानु, so, नैनु लेखपयाना, तन्ना, ऑपरेट जेस्सनाट्यगा, रेडी जेस्कुन्डानु, thank you madam. Thank you, Priyam Madam. So, अलाने, ईरोज, मनतोपाटो, इन्का, sales masters सुनरान्डे, वेमुला, नाइश्रो गरु, welcome sir. मा टीम निची, कोत्तगा, sales master आयुनारु। So, मना, Bangalore लो गोडा, Srinivas Garu, गोडा, चुस्नारु, trainingsलो। नाइश्रो गरु, अवकाशमुन्डे, unmute चेस्कुन, माट्लाड्छु। So, भागा, one and a half hour आयपन्डी, yes sir, welcome sir. Sir, मी माइक आनायन्डी, मीर माट्लाड्छु। Or, Prudvi Garu, मीरुन्ना, माट्लाड्छु। Okay, तनकी, signal proper गले दाट्लु नान्डे। Anyway, thank you, anyone, एक अवर्ना, डॉक्टर गरु तोटे, मीर एदन्ना, डेप्ट गा, questions उन्डे, knowledge तिस्कोच्छन्डे, so, ओका, टेन मिनिट्सलो, session, close जेस्कुन्ना, so, यवरकन्ना, एदन्ना, questions उन्डे, hand raise जेस्ते, permission इस्तानु, anyone?